Hello, I caught, um, welcome this afternoon for this special meeting. I call this February second, twenty twenty-two, virtual special administrative meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners to order. Thank you for being here today. Um, we will have a moment of silence, um, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by our very own Ken Martínez.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Martínez. Um, great, so speakers, um, we're gonna take public comments, um, before, um, so speakers, I don't know how many, um, Julianne, if you know, but speakers are limited to the first thirty speakers who have signed up online. You will have sixty seconds to share your comments. You will then be notified when your time is up, and you will then be muted and moved to the waiting room. Um, Julianne, please proceed in announcing the speakers.
We have four who have signed up. Colton Dean, Samuel Névez, Leila Salim, and Cheryl Harris. And it appears that only Mr. Samuel Névez and Cheryl Harris are online. Um, Mr. Névez, we'll start with you.
Hello, good afternoon, how are you guys? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm so sorry, give me one second. So I'm gonna give mine in Spanish, so. Be with me. Okay, buenas tardes, comisión del condado de Bernalillo County, les escribo ahora, simplemente les hablo ahora en esta noche, ah, porque ha dado cuenta que la Casa de Representantes de Nuevo México tiene una disponibilidad para el Distrito 12. Si quiero expresar que Nicole puede ser una candidata adecuada y excelente para este distrito, simplemente porque yo he admirado su esfuerzo, la pasión, y todo el trabajo que ella ha hecho en este distrito y para todo el estado de Nuevo México. No creo que haya ninguna otra persona disponible para poder tomar un trabajo tan difícil como Nicole. Yo sé que ella lo podría hacer. Ella ha dedicado miles de horas gratuitas para ayudar a la comunidad, entre todos los que no tienen casa, hasta los que, hasta los que necesitan ambiente, a un ambiente bien limpio. Es súper importante que no nomás, ah, el hombre, y pues vamos a decir, gente de mayor edad puedan tomar una decisión en lo que vendría siendo la Casa de Representantes de Nuevo México. Es súper importante escabelediremos lo que vendría siendo los jóvenes y lo que vendría siendo a las mujeres hispanas también en Nuevo México. Ella tiene pasión, tiene la necesidad para poder hacer que Nuevo México siga adelante.
Thank you, Mr. Névez. Go ahead to Cheryl Harris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Cheryl Harris. I'm a resident of Bernalillo County, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of Nicole Alonovich for filling this position for House District Twelve. Thank you for taking public contact. Um, Nicole, as you can see from her resume, has been an activist and a volunteer pretty much all of her life. Um, she has come in the last year or two to be active in the Democratic Party, and she certainly jumped in with both feet, taking on a number of assignments with, uh, different parts of the Democratic Party county organization, as well as our caucuses at the state level. Uh, her personal qualities are just many. Among them are her energy and her passion for serving other people, and especially people who are disadvantaged. I wish I could have presented my remarks in Spanish, but unfortunately, I am not bilingual. I, I wish I were, so I will just say in English, uh, she possesses ma- possesses massive amounts of energy and organization. She's quick to get things done, and she's, her intellectual ability to process large amounts of information have been wonderful. Thank you.
And Mr. Colton Dean?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Colton Dean. I'm a Democratic S C C member and award chair in Bernalillo County. Uh, and I'm also active with Adelante Progressive Caucus, and that's where I know Nicole from. Uh, I have found her to be a tremendous asset to our organization, um, being able to research and detail issues almost in, like, in real time, uh, able to organize people to get involved, to contact their representatives. Um, I strongly believe that she will hit the ground running mid-session, as we are, to, uh, fill in the H D twelve vacancy and, uh, be a tremendous asset, not just to the legislature, but to the state as a whole, and especially to H D twelve. Thank you very much, please, uh, select Nicole Alonovic.
Thank you, and our last commenter was Leila Salim, but I do not see her on, so that will conclude public comment.
Thank you, um, thank you for all the folks that are able to be here today in the middle of the day and, um, and to be civically engaged and speak up for folks who you, um, wanna see in office. This is exciting. Um, after public comment now has been concluded, applicants can have four minutes to speak, and we'll go in the following alphabetical order. We'll first hear from Melissa Armijo, second from Art De La Cruz, and third from Nicole Alonovic. So, um, thank you for being here, Melissa Armijo.
Thank you, everybody, so much. Um, I, first of all, would like to thank all the other candidates who are here today. I wanna thank all the commissioners and the Bernalillo County staff for all of their hard work and dedication to this process, and I wanna thank Brittany Barreras for her leadership over this last year and a half. Um, from two thousand and one and from two thousand to two thousand fifteen, I've experienced four losses that completely changed the trajectory of my life. The first was in July of two thousand and one, when my mother-in-law, Paulina Armijo, passed away while on vacation in a voting accident in Cabo San Lucas, Mexico. While she was on a glass-bottom boat excursion, a hurricane hit the Sea of Cortez and capsized the boat. Paulina was the best mother-in-law anyone could ask for, and since she only had sons, she called me the daughter she never had. At her funeral service, one of her best friends told me she couldn't have loved you more if she had given birth to you. Hearing that she spoke of me in that way made me super proud to be the daughter she never had. She was a dedicated educator who taught for the Bureau of Indian Affairs for over twenty years, and my passion for education came from her. After her death, my husband and I founded a nonprofit called the Armijo Family Scholarship Fund that provides scholarships to educators and STEM students. The second was in July of two thousand and two, when my employer, Nick Mellos of Thompson Mellos Engineering, was killed after he was in a car accident with two individuals who'd been on a robbery spree. The accident happened on Gerard and Silver, and when Nick went to check to see if everyone was okay, these individuals shot and killed him. I worked with Nick's company for five years, and during that time, I learned the importance of local business and the impact it makes on community. In the South Valley, we have businesses that have been here for generations, and we have also new businesses, and they both need support from their representative. From this tragic loss, I also learned about true compassion. Nick's family started a foundation in his name to raise money for at-risk youth to try and combat the cycles that perpetuate criminal behavior. Even though they felt the individuals who were responsible for Nick's death should receive prison time, they also felt that changing the systems in place were much more beneficial to our society as a whole. The third was in November of two thousand and two, when I lost my maternal grandmother, Natalia Mayestas. She was from a small community in northern New Mexico called Antocheco, and even though she was over two hundred miles from me, she was a huge force in my life. My sisters and I would stay with her over summer breaks, and she taught us the value of hard work. She also tried as best she could to teach us Spanish, but instead, we learned Spanglish. My grandmother was seventy-eight years old when she passed away, and through her illness, I learned about the needs of better healthcare services in our rural areas. She was sick for five years before she passed, and we never received a clear diagnosis or treatment plan, and I believe New Mexico can do better for our rural communities. The fourth was the loss of my husband, Mark Armijo, in December of two thousand and fifteen. We met when we were sophomores at Rio Grande High School. We became fast friends, and through that friendship, we had a very deep and committed relationship. During the course of our marriage, we became very involved in our community. We raised our children here in the South Valley, and in two thousand and one, he was elected as a founding governing board member of Nueces Valores Charter High School. In two thousand and eleven, he was also elected as the C N M governing board, and Mark actually ran for this house seat in two thousand and fourteen, and as we're amping up for his campaign, he was diagnosed with stage-four lung cancer. All campaigning stopped, and our focus shifted to his health. Once we had a plan in place for next steps, we decided to keep on campaigning and just see what would happen. He ended up losing that race by only thirty-eight votes, but he lost his battle with cancer eighteen months later. This is where my journey began. I was appointed to his C N M governing board seat, and I joined the governing board of Nueces Valores, and in two thousand and eighteen, the school honored my family by renaming the school the Mark Armijo Academy. Over the years, I've acquired so much knowledge and experience in education, and in particular, knowledge of charter schools. So I made the decision to run for the Public Education Commission in two thousand and twenty. I won the primary election and was unopposed in the general. I have served a full year and have learned so much about the Public Education Department, the Charter Schools Division, and overall education in our state. In closing, I would like to say that I am certain that I possess an unmatched capacity to preserve the unique historic qualities of the South Valley while working conscientiously to bring new and modern ideas to the table in Santa Fe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we will hear from Art De La Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's an absolute pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. I know you have an important decision to make, and I wanna also thank the other applicants for being part of this process and your willingness to put themselves out there. It's not an easy thing to do, and, and so I, I wanna commend them for that. Commissioners, many of you already know me. I have a long track record, but what you may not know is that I have dedicated my entire life to service. First, I started as a volunteer coach, uh, with the Real Grand Junior Wrestling Program. I volunteered at the detention center. Later on, I wanted to work with youth because I thought that, like, my life had been changed by people and educators. I wanted to give back, and so I did an entire career as, as a Parks and Recreation professional. Lastly, as a director of Parks and Recreation. I also went to teach at C N M because I wanted to help students be able to fulfill their dreams, fulfill their careers, and so I was an adjunct, uh, instructor in, uh, in business classes, and so I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud that I worked with other educators. But my, my record and my, my long career in service is well, well documented. You know what it is. Uh, when I was picked, uh, in two thousand and twenty to go serve for a short time as the legislator, I was so honored to do that. But you know, when you get all of these gray hairs, you know, sometimes they come with some experience, and, and I have a little bit of experience, not only as an elected official, but also interacting with other elected officials for almost a lifetime. Uh, you know, when I was Director of Parks and Rec, I was working with you guys, with commissioners, and, and so that, that experience is something that you gain through, through all of time. And so I hope that you take that into consideration when you make the selection and that, that you understand who can really hit the ground running in Santa Fe. There will be no on-the-job training for me. I know who is who there. I know how legislation works, and this year is particularly critical, particularly critical for Bernalillo County because of the dollars that are involved, because of the initiatives, particularly the governors' initiatives, the speakers and other legislators' initiatives, to happen this year. And I can make that happen if you allow me to go and do that work. I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate this moment with you, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
And thank you, um, everybody for having me, Chairwoman, members of the Commission. Uh, again, thank you for having me. To those who have spoken up for my appointment, I wanna recognize you and thank you. And anybody who wrote letters of support or may be listening, again, thank you. I'm truly blessed to call House District Twelve in the land of enchantment my ancestral community. For those who do not know me, my name's Nicole Alonovic, and I humbly sit before you on unceded Tijuana land and request, at the request of my community, for the appointment of House District Twelve. While this is never how I envisioned my political trajectory, the vacancy of the district during a thirty-day session holds a lot on the line for many folks, not only of my community, but of the great state of New Mexico. I have not taken the decision to enter this race lightly. I was informed, like the rest of my community, on Friday, and I sat with myself, my partner, and our growing baby in my belly, all weekend, to really decide what was in my best interest. The conclusion was, my best interest, not just for me, but for my growing family, for those who have guided me, encouraged me, mentored me, worked closely with me, is standing up now. This is the moment that my skills, my education, my knowledge, my connection to my community have met to tell me that I can do what I can do, and that is shine the light of importance on House District Twelve and be the voice that my district needs. For more time than I'd like to admit, my people have remained undereducated, wrongfully educated, or disenfranchised in the political arena. From the boom of the Borque, it has made the South Valley and the West Mesa the forgotten shadow of economic growth. Our schools are overpopulated, underfunded, emergency services, they're lacking, infrastructure is bottlenecked at best, our sequias need protection, minimum wage remains below livable wages, while our rents rise over seventeen percent during a global pandemic. And families just like mine are simply too overwhelmed trying to make decisions on whether paying for our utilities or food take priority. This November, I chose food over my utilities, and yet I sit before you. My culture loves pa sole and menudo with cabbage and radishes and limes, but it is not common knowledge that one out of three bites is brought to you by bees. These minute details are being debated in the state legislature right now. And while I support growth and development and fair housing, I have to balance that alongside our right to clean air, water, and our right to a healthy environment. I'm a down-winder of burn pits during my service to this country in Iraq, twelve hours a day breathing in toxic air, and I wouldn't wish that on my mortal enemy. There are ways to address growth, human rights, environmental justice, and more at the intersection that respects not just human capital, but humanity. This appointment, whether it be me or one of the other decorated individuals before you, needs to come with an open-door policy to my people. The community will never be one hundred percent behind any given topic. I know this because I was raised here with my family in this politically diverse landscape, a place where two loving Catholic Republican lesbian women raised the likes of me, a humble Democrat who knows how to reach across the aisle because I once stood proudly on that other side. So today, I ask you for your support, and I make a call to my community for continued support going into two thousand and twenty-two because I know now is a time that we need to step up and be the change we need. And with that, I thank you for allowing me here today, and I offer up my public service, and I thank you to everybody who's standing beside me.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Um, yes. We're taking questions and comments?
Yes. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, before we make our selection of one of these terrific candidates, I really would just like to give a shout out to Brittany Barreras, um, for stepping up to the plate and serving. I truly believe a hundred percent that the District Twelve had never seen or heard a voice like hers before. So, um, for everything that she brought, um, her authenticity, her compassion, her passion, I think that she, um, you know, she kind of shifted politics and, um, bent the arc a little bit in the right direction for all of us. So I just wanna give a big shout out and a thank you for Brittany Barreras for being brave enough to follow her heart and speak her truth and do, do what was right for her in stepping down at this time, and also for all the great work that she had done in the time she was in office. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I also would like to, you know, thank Brittany Barreras for her service to the community. Um, I think that all of us in elected office understand, uh, the pressures and, and the difficulty it is to navigate, uh, to speak up for a community like the community I represent. Um, the rep, I, I know a lot of people feel like the, that a lot of their districts, uh, are the same as mine, and, uh, they're really not. Uh, it's really harder to, to look at how, how we've been not only underserved, but I think historically neglected, and, and to have somebody, uh, you know, who isn't typically, uh, somebody who would run for office, somebody who's not really a politician, to stand up to the plate, to give it their best shot. Um, and I understand, um, how it's hard to juggle, uh, your mental capacity with your job, with your family, and to give whatever little time of that completely to your community. And so I also want to speak on behalf of Brittany Barreras. Uh, and the time that I was able to speak with her, um, I have a lot of respect for her, and as the Commissioner from District Two, um, I wanna wish her, um, a lot of luck in the future and hoping that, you know, down the road, that she may think about one day coming back and being able to get herself in a position where she can serve honorably like she did, uh, this last, uh, you know, these last couple of years. But we do understand that it's difficult. We understand that politics changes people, and it changes how, how you perceive things and, and how hard it is to deal with that, and so we're with you, Brittany. Uh, our prayers are for you, for your family, and we hope for, uh, your health and happiness in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanna join the chorus, uh, and just recognize Representative Barreras and thank her for her service and, uh, and also just acknowledge the, the challenge that it is to serve and, uh, serve in such a public capacity, and, um, yeah, it's not easy. And so, and with that, I wanna thank the three applicants here. Um, you all are, uh, I'm, I'm honored to be here in front of you. You're stepping into the ring, it's not an easy, easy task. Uh, it's, at this point, it's an unknown for each of you, and that's a nerve-wracking situation. Um, and then whichever one gets appointed, going into the, into the, you know, belly of the beast, and, uh, and that's not anything, so your, your heart and your desire and your commitment to our community is, uh, has been demonstrated here, and although I don't know all of you, uh, I thank you for, for jumping into this process. It's a, it's a wonderful process, uh, it's not easy, but it is worthwhile. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. I wanted to say that, um, I got to talk and meet, I know the alcalades of, um, Art De La Cruz, that I got to have great conversations with Melissa Armijo and Nicole Alonovic, and, um, I'm just excited that we have such a full, um, a, a, a full place to pick from. Um, I wanted to mention that we, my office at least, received forty-three calls in support of Nicole Alonovic, forty-two in support of Melissa Armijo, and forty-one in support of Art De La Cruz. Art also shared a petition with fifteen signatures, um, asking for the appointment to the office. Um, I share this because I like, um, because right part of this, whoever gets it out of here today has to run a campaign, like, today, tomorrow, and, um, and so you all have gotten a start, right? Getting folks to call and your support, and, um, so I, I'm glad and thank you for getting those folks in. Thanks for having Spanish-language speakers come and, um, and voice their opinions, and, um, yes, uh, good luck to you in these last days of the lunch sessions, whoever gets it. Um, so now I'll call for nominations. Yes, Commissioner Casada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, uh, so before I, I, I make my nomination, I was blessed to speak to all three candidates. I'm gonna tell you that I'm very honored, uh, to have spoken to all three of them. Um, uh, I see eye to eye with all three of them, which is a pretty amazing kind of thing. Uh, that kind of shows you, uh, how united we are in, in my district. Uh, and I, and I just wanna tell you, I consider you all, uh, friends, um, and, and I'm very honored, uh, that you're here, and I'm very extremely honored that you're all willing to run for this seat, that it's not just about an appointment, that you're actually gonna go out and knock on the doors and run a campaign and show the people of our district that how much you really care for them. And so I'm very honored, uh, to have you all here today. Um, I wish we could send all three of you. I wish I had three openings in my district because I know if I sent all three of you from my district to Santa Fe, that the success of our district would be amazing of what we could get done. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, that we continue our relationship. I wanted to tell you that my door is always open to all three of you, uh, at any time, or anything that you're working on. We have a lot of things that are in common when it comes from education, charter schools. As you know, I come from charter schools and working on that through A P S, um, from, you know, uh, working on gang intervention and, and, and stuff, uh, that Art De La Cruz did through, uh, through what he did, and, and also Nicole, uh, about her willingness to listen to both sides and represent all people. I think that statement you told me earlier made me very proud of who you are, what kind of leader you're gonna be in the future. Again, this is not easy for us, but this is a job we have, this is a job we have to do. And with that being said, Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Art De La Cruz, uh, for this short term, and I'm very excited to see everybody's campaign. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, with a second.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Pescotti. Thank you. Um, I, yeah, I also spoke with all the candidates, and I admire them so much. Um, each one is just outstanding in, in their service and what they do and what they bring. Um, I would like to, at this time, however, nominate Melissa Armijo.
I'll second that. Thank you. Commissioner Casada. Oh, did you?
Yeah, no, and I'd also like to nominate Nicole Alonovic. I think she deserves a nomination. Uh, I think she's spectacular, and, uh, she's got a lot of community support, and I wanna stand by, by her also.
I'll second.
Thank you, I'll second. Thank you, Commissioner Pescotti.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
I know we're about to take votes after the nomination, and I did wanna say a, a few words, if that was okay.
Um, yeah.
You know, I, I heard from many people in the district and outside of the district whom I respect and, and who've been longtime supporters. Um, they contacted me with their recommendations for this appointment, and I wanna say that I appreciate hearing from all of you. Um, you know, I, like my fellow commissioners, don't take this decision lightly, and, and I hope that people understand there are a lot of factors that affect. and I hope that people understand there are a lot of factors that affect a decision like this. First, I also want to thank former Representative Barreras for her service. While the timing of her resignation was not ideal, I understand her reasons for doing so. Serving in a legislative capacity locally or at the state level can be extremely stressful. It tests a person's fortitude. And certainly in my case, I would not have been able to run campaigns and serve these many years without the unwavering support of my family. I will be voting in support of Art Dela Cruz. In his favor, he has been a strong, loyal Democrat and has many years' experience as a legislator. I served with him on the Commission, and we were allied on many issues. We had very strong differences when it came to growth and development, but we maintained a mutually respectful relationship. My support for Mr. Dela Cruz is not meant to take away from the many accomplishments of the other candidates who may be running for this seat. Despite this appointment, it really is an open seat, and it's going to be very competitive. Lastly, we've had a practice on this Commission to strongly consider the preference and defer to the choice of the Commissioner whose district this appointment directly affects. This district in the South Valley and it's in Commissioner Casada's district. We do this with the understanding that when a vacancy shows up in our respective districts, we will be given the same consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner O'Malley. I just want to piggyback off that a little bit because I think this is an important moment as we're recognizing Brittany, right? That when we talk about what democracy looks like and having people with lived experiences and, you know, all the different ways that we want to have voice and representation. You know, Nicole's pregnant right now. Melissa's lost her husband not too long ago. Like, and Commissioner Dela Cruz has been through it all. And I think we have to do better by really figuring out what that means. How do we provide funding so that people can have childcare or help their, with meals while they're serving on those 30 and 60 days? So I know that might be far away, but I just wanted to plug that as we talk about how we take care of mental, our mental, how our bodies, mind, heart, and soul. So thank you for being here today. I will share a motion to fill the vacancy for State House of Representatives District 12 by appointing a new representative to fill the unexpired term. Roll call. We have our, we have two, actually, three nominations, always second. We'll start with the first submitted, Commissioner Casada. County Clerk, can you please call the vote for Art Dela Cruz?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Casada.
Yes.
Mr. Pescotti.
I actually spoke with Art Dela Cruz earlier today, and I told him that I admire the heck out of him. I appreciate his service, but that I would be reserving my vote for somebody different this time, for Melissa Armiho. So I'm sorry, Art. I'm going to vote no this time, but I love and respect you. So thank you.
Vice Chair Vincent.
Yes.
Madam Chair Barbosa.
Yes. Thank you. So it looks like we have, gosh. We have Art Dela Cruz who's received four votes in favor. And, sorry, trying to pull up my script. And after we adjourn, we'll move into the swearing-in, the appointee. So please stay on the Zoom call to watch the swearing-in by County Clerk Linda Stover. And I just want to bring some clarity. So once we have, you know, everyone was nominated, everybody got a second. Once we have one person that has three or more votes, then they are, then they've gotten the seat. So that is the process, just to share for clarity. I know sometimes after, people are like, what happened? That's what happened. I think we heard great information about all the candidates. And yeah, we're excited to see Art Dela Cruz has won the votes from the Commission to this seat. So yes, we will be staying on for the swearing-of-appointee. Thank you, everybody, for your time this afternoon, and this meeting is adjourned.